Good, good. All right, great. Good morning, everybody. I am pleased to call to order the July 21st, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three Commissioners, and I'm going to ask Stephanie Landis to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to start my comments this morning with an announcement about a new service available to Pennsylvanians and folks all across our country, which is the new 988 number. By dialing 988, callers will now be directly connected to the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. Folks can also text or chat with 988, and doing that will directly connect you to the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. There is an existing 10-digit number, which I will spare you and not read the number, because it's more important that you remember 988, but that existing 10-digit number will still remain available for folks who have that. Callers can also connect with the Veterans Crisis Line, and they can also receive assistance in Spanish when they call 988. This number can be used by anyone, anytime, any place, at no cost. It's a 24/7 availability. Trained crisis response professionals will support individuals who are thinking about suicide or other self-harm, or any behavioral or mental health need for themselves, or people looking for help for a loved one experiencing a mental health crisis. As I said, these services are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they are no cost to the individual that calls. By directing cases to 988 when a behavioral health or mental health crisis isn't life-threatening, the response provided by public services, such as law enforcement and EMS, can be reserved for situations in which lives are endangered. We ask that you please bookmark this new number and share this resource in your community. And next, I would like to take a moment to encourage the public to consider a job in public service, specifically working here in Montgomery County. Our employees are our most important asset, and we take pride in offering an affordable, quality benefits package that helps to protect and support our employees and their families. In addition, the county is now offering a sign-on bonus for certain positions. This bonus is being offered to help recruit for critical roles with high vacancy rates and to assist the county in competing for talent in today's very competitive job market. The amount of the one-time sign-on bonus will be equal to 10% of the annual salary amount before taxes, and will be paid out once the employee completes their 90-day introductory period. Current roles eligible for a sign-on bonus include daytime custodians, roads and bridges laborers, county and courthouse security officers, correctional officers, 911 telecommunications, assistant district attorneys, Office of Children and Youth Protective Case Workers, public health nurses, Office of Senior Services Protective Case Workers, attorneys with our Public Defender's Office, deputy sheriffs and youth center counselors, and youth center family advocates. If you're interested in any one of these roles eligible for a sign-on bonus, we encourage you to apply by visiting www.montco PA dot org forward slash bonus. And there you can find full job descriptions and an application and more information. And now I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you. Good morning. I first want to start by recognizing two Montgomery County residents who were inducted into the Pennsylvania Voters Hall of Fame. And this honor is extended to residents who vote in 50 consecutive November elections, which is not an easy feat. So on behalf of the Montgomery County Board of Elections, I'd like to congratulate James Finney Meyer and James Polantowski on their dedication to voting. Residents who believe they are qualified for the Hall of Fame recognition can find more information about the application at www.vote PA dot gov, or can call our Office of Voter Services at 610-278-3280. And next, I'd like to thank everyone who donated to our Health and Human Services grocery gift card drive. That drive collected $2,300 in gift cards for families in need in our area, and their next drive is already underway, and that is the Back to School Donation Drive. They're accepting supplies for both students and for the classroom. This includes items such as backpacks, flash drives, scissors, and more. And a full list of accepted items can be found on the screen or by visiting www.montco PA dot org slash HHS donations. The Back to School Donation Drive runs through August 24th, and donations are accepted at the Montgomery County Human Services Center located at 1430 DeKalb Street in Norristown. And thank you in advance to everyone who donates.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Do we have anyone for that? Ms. Francisco? Yes, okay.
It looks like we have just general public comment, but we still.
Okay. So Mr. Stein, what about reading?
Yes, thank you. All speakers should sign into the meeting sheet available in the back of the room or virtually as indicated by Ms. Francisco. All speakers must come to the podium if they are physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration, or which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting.
I have an objection.
Would you like to state your objection?
Yes, I would.
My name is Pauline Braccio. I live in Towneans and Township. The portion that you are reading, you can't say that general comments and agenda comments have the same basis, because they don't. If something is on the agenda, that's what's before the Board, but a general comment has to be germane in that it applies to the county, but it may never come up for vote or have anything to do with the Commissioners themselves on the topic. So, and especially the second page, you say that the general public comment is supposed to be the same as the... It's not, Josh. It just isn't. So it's if... And we've had people come up here and talk about things that were not on the agenda but are germane to the county. So I really wish that you would change the wording, because that just doesn't make sense.
Thank you very much for your comment, and yours is noted. Items which may are coming... I'm sorry, I'll start again. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration, or which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The Board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded that this is not an opportunity for dialogue and questions and answers. The Board Chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling from the seats, arguing whether a matter is germane to county business once the solicitor has made a determination of such, or refusing to yield the floor when time has elapsed and being requested to sit down, shall be grounds for removal or muting from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. And as always, the Commissioners welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedbacks at commissioners@montco PA dot org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right. Ms. Francisco?
Okay. First, we have Pauline Braccio.
Good morning, Pauline Braccio from Towneans and Township. I would like to continue with what I said the last meeting, where you are literally defunding law enforcement by not increasing their budgets. And I'd like to... I know you're not going to answer me, but in the middle of the night, if someone... If you hear someone breaking into your home, would you not dial 911? I know that I would, because I have. So I just really would like to understand why you would not increase the budget. DA Steele, who was present today, did tell you that he needs better training for the officers, and Sheriff Kilkenny was also here a couple of meetings ago, saying, you know, explaining that the beginning salary for the sheriff, for the deputies here in Montgomery County is way below other agencies. So why wouldn't a person who comes to Montgomery County and is trained as a deputy not want to go elsewhere where he could make or she could make more money? It doesn't make sense. You're not keeping people here who are good. You're not allowing for officers to have more training, and also to increase the police population, because, as you know, there is a lot of residential building going on, so the population will increase. When you have denser population, you have more crime. You're building this ridiculous supercenter here for justice, and there will be nobody to process through it, because you won't have enough police. So again, I urge you, part of that 161 million should be going to funding law enforcement in our county. Thank you.
Next, we have Kim Henderson, who's online. Kim?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Kim Henderson, East Norrington. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at these meetings. I feel like it's very important for us to share all of our concerns about the county. And as you all know, I do appreciate all of your service and all the service of the officers and sheriffs and all of our first responders in the county, so I thank you all for that. And I'm here, as I am at all the meetings, to just express my concern for election integrity. And as we are looking to the next election, my request, and we, the people's, request is to get rid of the drop boxes as we just get ready. It just seems like it's... It allows for multiple ballots and unchecked checks and balances, as we should have in our election process, and that's going to always be my concern. And I would love to actually have request a questions and answers opportunity with the Commissioners, if we can get that on the schedule, so that you can hear out your constituents and really have a dialogue, I think that would really help with a safe, secure, and transparent election process. And as you know, I've also volunteered in multiple capacities, and I'm more than happy to help in any way of the process, because I think the people of Montgomery County and the state of Pennsylvania and the United States of America all deserve a safe, secure, transparent election. So I look forward to hearing from you, and I really... I would also like to know what the process is to request a questions and answers opportunity with the Commissioners. So thank you very much, and have a wonderful day.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the July 7th, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Bonner. Where is Mr. Bonner? Oh, there he is. Good morning. You've had a very busy week.
Good work.
We are excited to hear an update on how things are going with the draft recovery plan.
Well, it is certainly exciting, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. I'm just going to put some information up on the screen. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to provide this update this morning. Last time we spoke, I was updating you on the end of our submission period and the work that we were doing at that time. I'm happy to now say we have published the draft recovery plan in keeping with the process that we outlined at the beginning of this procedure. If you can just go to the next slide, Kelly. As we talked about previously, and I'm just reiterating what we have gone through to get to this point, the Pandemic Recovery Fund priorities... Now, again, the Pandemic Recovery Fund is our local name for the state and local fiscal recovery funds allocation of $161.4 million, provided through the American Rescue Plan Act, signed in March of 2020... 2021, excuse me. In keeping with the guidance and the procedures that were laid out, as you know, through that legislation, we engaged in a 10-month community engagement process, employing town halls, surveys, and community conversations that collectively established a process that is community-informed, transparent, equitable, and accessible. We also established priorities for investments in keeping with the funding guidance that directly support communities hit hardest by the pandemic, that are transformative and that take advantage of one-time, large-scale nature of this funding, that respond directly to the impacts of the pandemic, or issues that were made more severe by the pandemic, and that invest in areas of high need, with priorities identified by the community, including affordable housing, behavioral health services, childcare services, emergency response, and digital access. Next slide, please. To reiterate again, our process began last September with the creation of the Recovery Office by this Board of Commissioners. Through the community engagement process that we discussed, which leaned on the expertise and the relationships across multiple community partners and individuals throughout Montgomery County, we established those community priorities all the way through April of 2022. We implemented an open submission process, beginning in March, March 1st, of this year, and ending on April 30th, which, again, you've heard about those updates and are, like myself, last-minute submissions through April 30th. Our draft plan has then been assembled since the end of that submission period through July 18th. We are here, as you can see from the arrow, in the Draft Recovery Plan Review. So between July 18th and July 29th, in keeping with the process we outlined at the beginning, we are accepting and encouraging public feedback on the draft plan, as is fully published on our website. To be clear, the entirety of the plan, including projects funded and not funded, organizational areas, highlights, and emphasized efforts that we have in there are all published and available for review. That will lead us to incorporate that feedback between the beginning of August and August 18th, when, at this board meeting in August, the final recovery plan will be adopted for approval. That will then start the project implementation period, where we work with all of the individually-funded The Draft Recovery Plan represents fulfillment of the priorities dictated through this community engagement process, and with the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act in mind. The magnitude of the submissions was a great problem to have, resulting in the county needing to choose between excellent projects. The process to review, score, and select projects for funding took into account the opportunity, asking but for this program, would this project move forward? Our community scoring panel provided objectivity across numbers and diverse perspectives. We were careful to weigh the degree to which projects served underserved communities, as instructed by the funding guidance, and whether the plan represents a diversity of scale across organizations. The county sought to fund projects representing communities geographically distributed across Montgomery County, with attention focused, as directed, on our qualified census tract communities in Potstown and Norristown. And in keeping with the required timeframe for expenditure of these funds, the county took into the account the feasibility of achieving each project within the three-and-a-half years that we have. That work, crediting our community partners that created the process and defined our goals, the 30 reviewers who worked to review every project, and the Recovery Office staff who directly worked in and with every project and discussed issues and questions at length with submitters across the county, created the draft plan, which I'm going to walk through briefly today. As you can see, we have funded 100... We have recommended funding for 110 projects out of 426 submitting. That allocates all 161.4 million. This graphic that you see here, I'm going to walk through in subsequent slides, so if you can click to the next one, please, Kelly. $32.4 million is allocated to housing, supporting construction of new units, short-term emergency housing, preservation and investment in existing stock, and a transformative housing opportunities fund. Next slide. $28 million is allocated to community services and facilities, constructing and improving centers, housing multiple providers in impacted communities throughout Montgomery County. $25.6 million is allocated towards county operations. This includes premium pay for essential workers, replacement of lost revenue resulting from the economic downturn, operational improvements, and worker retention programs. $18.1 million is allocated to behavioral health, including the creation of a Behavioral Health Crisis Response Center, a long-sought-after resource serving residents experiencing mental health crises. In addition, school-based behavioral health services staffing through school districts and community-based programs and services are funded through the behavioral health area. $14.4 million is allocated to economic and workforce development, including pipeline, meaning programs that are meant to increase the supply of workers in various sectors, and education programs, minority women-owned business enterprise, small business support, tuition assistance initiatives, and job marketing and preparedness mentoring. $11.3 million is allocated to public health and safety, improving EMS worker... Excuse me. Improving emergency medical services worker training and pay, maternity health outcomes, violence mitigation programs, and COVID-19 monitoring and mitigation strategies. $9.6 million is allocated to childcare in response to a priority identified by the community as one of the highest, and as expressed in the submissions we received, providing operational support and new models across the childcare sector. Similarly, in food security, $8.4 million is allocated for investment in all aspects of county's emergency food infrastructure, including food production, food distribution, policy and strategy, logistical and operational coordination across the multiple community partners that operate in the food security system throughout Montgomery County. $5.1 million is allocated for nonprofit and community support. Apologies for the typo. It is not just $5. $5.1 million is allocated to nonprofit and community support for community data resources, violence prevention programs, clothing distribution, immigrant case management service projects, and support for nonprofits financially impacted by the pandemic. And $5.6 million is allocated to public utilities and infrastructure, including stormwater management projects and planning, clean water infrastructure improvement initiatives, and various other public sector improvements. As I said from the beginning, we are now in public feedback on the Draft Recovery Plan. So what does that mean? What is the purpose of the public feedback period? First and foremost is to provide transparency throughout the process. As we said from the beginning, this process has been designed and has been implemented in a way to be completely open as we've moved through it. We want to maintain consistent and regular engagement with the community, building on the relationships that we established and that were established with us through the community engagement process, and to provide accountability for the process that we created. We are accepting feedback... Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Kelly. We are accepting feedback through a link that will provide... It's actually available on our website at montco PA dot org slash recovery office, and we encourage the general public to review the plan. There are multiple documents available for your review, and then submit your feedback pursuant to the form that's offered there. You can offer feedback as far as how you experienced the funding process, thoughts on how well the plan matches community priorities, and other general comments and suggestions. And we will use this feedback. We may make adjustments to the plan where appropriate. We will use the feedback to identify, most importantly, future funding priorities, and this process and this feedback will help inform how we change and improve for future county funding processes. Sorry, next slide, Kelly. Just a few quick highlights. These are all included in the documents that are provided on the website. I mentioned that the funding guidance for the American Rescue Plan Act, and specifically the state and local fiscal recovery funds, directs and guides recipients... That would be the county of funds, to invest in qualified census tract with a lens of equity, across the project investment, across the way that project ideas were selected. And so this shows what is funded in this body of work. $20 million is allocated specifically, and again, to be clear, this data is based on self-reported information by the people who submitted the projects. So this means that $20 million is allocated to projects stating that they are focusing on work in the geographic area of Norristown. $14 million is allocated to projects focusing on Potstown, and $7 million, the yellow at the beginning of the bar, is allocated between... to programs focusing on both Norristown and Potstown. This is not to say that the remaining $121 million does not also benefit residents of Norristown and Potstown, but does do that work with the rest of the county and focuses on the same types of areas without specifically identifying Norristown and/or Potstown as their focus. Go to the next slide, please. What kind of organizations are receiving funds through this project, through this Draft Recovery Plan? As you can see, non-county entities, nonprofit organizations, for-profit businesses, individual community groups are receiving over half of the funding at $81.3 million. Community funding programs managed by the county, these are projects managed by our own Department of Health and Human Services, or our own Planning Commission, or work that goes on that is managed by the county but actually is spent in the community on community projects. Housing is a good example of this. Behavioral health is another great example. These are projects that we will be managing, but actually will go towards enhancing community services. $25.6... $25.1 million, excuse me, as I mentioned earlier, is funding county operations pursuant to the funding guidance. And then community-based grant programs, that's $12.2 million, or about 8% of the overall total, is allocated to making sure that we are able to address those priorities that came in and were expressed across ideas and projects that should be spread across the county. For example, we have a childcare operations grant amounting to $4 million, and is meant to provide small, direct operational enhancement grants to childcare providers across the county. Finally, there's a 1.5% contingency. Now, again, that contingency will be directly applied to all the projects. This is not money that the Recovery Office will be holding. This is meant to make sure that these projects can happen. So if cost overrun occurs, if supply chain issues dictate differences in project costs, we want to be sure we're able to still move the projects forward, and so that's why the small amount is held. It will not be held past 2024, because at that point, it needs to be allocated into the projects that we're funding. Next slide, please, Kelly. The plan, as I stated, has a priority on diversifying how we are spending this money. So fully, and this data, again, is based on reported information through our submission process, 30% of the overall projects, or 33 in total, are run by organizations with annual budgets under $1 million. Again, just representing a proxy for small, new organizations that have come through this process and are now receiving funding through this program. To manifest this, and I spoke briefly about the process earlier, but we made sure to open this process, both for submission of projects that represent fully-fleshed-out ideas, and then as expression of ideas, as an expression of priority. We also contracted, as you know, for technical assistance, and that effort assisted over 400 organizations and individuals in submitting their projects. Next slide, please. We did take those ideas. We received 157 ideas. We used them to inform the plan that was developed into this... into these 110 projects. And so there are multiple ideas that came through simply as ideas that then were transformed into actual projects that are funded in here. Some of them are funded as sub-grant programs. Some of them are funded as projects that are still taking shape. But these ideas that you see here, Childcare Workforce Transformation Initiative, the Norristown Community Space Facility Project, Asian American Pacific Islander Community Need Study, and Emergency Medical and Fire Services Support Analysis Improvement, all of those grew from a combination of what was expressed in the idea inventory and what was submitted in the project. Next slide, please. As we've stated from the beginning, and this is the next step, in addition to implementing the projects that we're funding, the projects that we're funding and the projects that have not been funded are being held, advertised, and communicated to... through this inventory of projects to connect to future funding, whether it's through ARPA, dispensed by the state or other entities, other county funds, other state processes. We want to be sure that as we have an inventory of vetted and viable projects, that we use that to inform how money is spent in the future, including our philanthropic community. So in the coming weeks and months, we will be establishing communication tools through our website and through direct efforts across the county to make sure that we are making clear what our inventory is. Next slide, please. Finally, from here, we are conducting town halls, one tonight, there's several next week, and we are going through early August with town halls, meant simply to do exactly a little bit... with a little bit more detail, what we have on the website, explain the process, ask for feedback, and ensure that people understand how to submit that, in keeping with that community feedback period. All stakeholders can submit comments until August 5th, 2022 via this online submission form available through our website. We will review all feedback received and make adjustments as appropriate, and then, as I said, the final plan is presented for action during the August 18th Commissioners' meeting. And that concludes this update. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Bonner, thank you, and thanks to Emma Hertz and your whole team and the Recovery Office. This has been quite a journey to get us to this point, and I understand the two town halls yesterday were quite well-attended.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Very well, yeah.
So that's wonderful, and we encourage people to continue to give us your feedback here over the next few days, and look forward to seeing what comes out of that process, and very excited to vote on this in August, so people can get to work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Tom, thanks for the report. Can you talk a little bit more for people who might not... about the citizen review panels?
Sure.
Your team did a great job, but I want to make sure that people know that we had citizens, so if you can talk about that.
Absolutely, Commissioner. So the... So the community reviewer panel for scoring was an integral part of the process. Part of that, and I mean that because it was specifically designed to be exterior to the group and provide an objective review of projects as represented by what is a priority for the community. And so we, in working through the community engagement process, established multiple relationships across the county, and tapped into existing partners that many county offices have worked with before, distributed a call for reviewers with guidelines and saying we are interested in creating a diverse panel, representing lived experience, and representing people that are interested in establishing a vision for how this funding gets spent. We, the scoring system that our staff, you know, created necessitated at least thirty reviewers. So we needed thirty people to be assigned across the body of projects that came in to make sure that we establish objectivity across the numbers. We received eighty expressions of interest, including a brief essay of why they wanted to be a reviewer for those thirty spots. So again, a good problem to have, and we will be tapping into that group again as we move forward. But after the, after projects came in, the recovery office staff did vetting and feasibility study, we also then forwarded to all of those reviewers who reviewed at least a hundred and forty or so projects each to make sure that we reviewed the entire entity with at least ten reviews per project. And so those people worked hard. They represent various sectors of the community, various ethnic and demographics, excuse me, ethnic demographics, community groups, lived experience, where, for instance, if you had experienced homelessness, if you were a behavioral health services consumer. We have, you know, certainly data on who that was, and so, again, just to emphasize that, objectivity and sort of third party that we created to make sure that these projects were reviewed by people outside the county, as I said, not to say we wouldn't approve things going forward, but it will be certainly implemented with different models going forward.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks for the update, Mr. Bonner.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is pretrial probation and parole supervision week, and to give us some updates on what's going on here at the county, we have Stephanie Landis, Director of Supervision Services. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Kusch, Commissioner Lawrence, and Commissioner Gail. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for acknowledging National Pretrial Probation and Parole Supervisions Week. Community supervision is an essential and critical part of our criminal justice system. Community supervision's primary focus is community safety and rehabilitation of offenders. We strongly believe in a person's ability to change, to do better, when afforded with the appropriate resources and opportunities. Often, people just need a chance. Community supervision is an alternative to incarceration that allows offenders the opportunity to work, attend school, remain engaged with and support their families, and make restitution to the victims of their crimes. In July of 2020, our county and courts established Supervision Services, which is responsible for the operational management of all court service departments. Supervision Services oversees the adult probation department, the DUI administration, the juvenile probation department, treatment courts, and pretrial services. I am honored to work as the Director of Supervision Services and would like to acknowledge our county's administrative team. Kathy Subio is our newly appointed chief adult probation officer. Todd Bergman is our deputy chief adult probation officer. Megan Morrison is our deputy chief overseeing treatment courts and special populations. Kathy Zalinski is our juvenile probation, chief probation officer, and Cheryl Weed is our deputy chief juvenile probation officer. Doug Coppin is our chief of pretrial services. Our adult and juvenile probation departments are under new leadership. Our work will remain focused on community safety and the rehabilitation of our offenders. We will continue to examine our protocols, and we will continue to implement evidence-based practices. We will continue to look for opportunities to better ourselves and to focus on fundamental fairness. Our focus will remain on justice, and we strive to always do the right thing. We make decisions that we believe help keep our community safe, allow our victims to be made whole, and will provide our offenders with resources and opportunities to make lasting change. This year, for the first time, we are able to include pretrial services in this celebration. In February of 2022, after extensive research and planning, our county launched our pretrial services department. The planning and implementation of this program are the results of a strong collaborative relationship between multiple county departments and community partners. The courts, District Attorney's Office, Public Defender's Office, Criminal Defense Bar, Montgomery County Victim Services, the Police Chiefs Association of Montgomery County, Correctional Facility, and Sheriff's Department worked side by side with Doug and me to establish the program we have today. I would be remiss not to acknowledge the support, guidance, and funding of our commissioners and the commissioners' office. In the development phase of this program, we met with numerous magisterial district judges, many of whom told us the decisions on setting bail were among the most challenging, the most challenging of their duties. Pretrial Services has standardized this process to provide these judges with a criminal history, a risk assessment, and demographic information so that they can make a more informed bail decision. Pretrial Services has taken bail from a resource-based system to a risk-based system. We increase community safety and the likelihood of court appearances when detention decisions are made based on the defendant's risk as opposed to their financial situation, specifically the defendant's ability or inability to make bail. Defendants are represented by the Public Defender's Office at the arraignment. The District Attorney's Office is present to ensure the defendant is properly charged while advocating for the victim and public safety. Pretrial Services monitors defendants on bail. Pretrial Services enforces court-ordered conditions and will notify the court and DA's office when noncompliance threatens public safety or court appearance. Release detention decisions carry enormous consequences for the defendant, the community, victims, the criminal justice system, and the overall integrity of the judicial process. Pretrial Services does not set bail or make recommendations for bail. Pretrial Service officers work with community, with criminal defendants to ensure public safety and court appearances. The addition of Pretrial Services has closed a major gap in Montgomery County's criminal justice system. It provides a comprehensive and robust court supervision services department and allows us to serve the residents of our county with equity. I thank you for the opportunity to acknowledge pretrial, probation, and parole supervision. The administrative team and I are here to represent a very committed group of professionals who work tirelessly to mentor, coach, and guide individuals under supervision. These officers are change agents, working in collaboration with the police, mental health, and drug and alcohol providers, as well as numerous community partners. Our goal is to assist and assist in the rehabilitation and the safe and successful reintegration of defendants into the community. I am grateful for the opportunity to work with this dedicated group of professionals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Landis, thank you so much, and thank you to your team that's here today. It's great to see all of you. Commissioner Lawrence and I recently had the opportunity to spend some time in a couple of different locations around the county with folks on your team and yourself, and I was just so struck by the passion and the commitment of everyone in Supervision Services to ensuring that every person is treated equitably in our county, that people who need treatment rather than incarceration are connected to that treatment, and that we do everything that we can to get, help people get back on their feet, make restitution where necessary, and reintegrate and return into our communities. So I'm so grateful for this work that you're doing, and great to hear the incredible progress that's been made over the last year. So thank you. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you for the report, Ms. Landis, and welcome everyone who's here today.
Ms. Landis, I'd also like to thank you for attending our meeting today, and your colleagues as well for joining us, and all the staff that works hard each and every day to help keep Montgomery County a safe county and our communities, also to provide justice, and also to help individuals reach their full potential and become productive members of our society. So you do important work, and it doesn't go unseen, and I'm thankful for what you do each day.
Thank you. All right. Before we move on to ordinances, I just want to acknowledge that our District Attorney, Kevin Steele, is here with us today, and our Controller, Karen Sanchez. District Attorney, did you have any comments that you wanted to add to?
No.
Okay, great. All right, then, we will move on to Mr. Dorton's report, the authorization for the issuance of general obligation notes for the regional streetlight procurement program.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission's third round that brings together municipalities with a financing plan to convert streetlights, LED technology. The ordinance in front of you will authorize the finance plan with your approval, and it's recommended by staff in Del Valle.
Great. I will move that the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners authorize the issuance of General Obligation Notes 2022 series in the aggregate amount of $200,000, the proceeds of which will fund the design to improve municipal street lighting systems, remove inefficient equipment and facilities, and acquire, construct, install, and maintain more efficient fixtures and equipment to reduce energy consumption and costs, and to pay the expenses of the issuance of the notes in a form and according to those terms and conditions which are stated in the documents that shall accompany this ordinance and shall be made publicly available and which shall be transmitted by the Department of Community and Economic Development for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. I just want to highlight this program as something that we've been working on now for several years, and we've done, I think this is at least our third round of these bonds, and that this program is a great example of multiple levels of government working together to create a program that the end user, which is our municipalities, wouldn't, in most cases, not have been able to afford on their own. And so this program was started several years ago. Basically, we helped bulk purchase LED lights, streetlights for these municipalities. We can get a much lower cost to the municipalities because of the amount that is being purchased. The municipalities install and maintain these lights, but in virtually every case, and depending upon the size of the municipality, within seven to ten or twelve or so years, these programs pay for themselves because of the reduction in electricity costs, because these are LED lights with a dramatically lower use of electricity. So this is great for taxpayers. This is great for our environment because of the reduction in electricity, and just very proud that we can be part of making this program work for any of our sixty-two municipalities that want to participate. So thank you.
Mr. Dorton, can you please explain the maximum interest rate for this obligation? I believe it's a maximum of fifteen percent?
Well, you know, this, so the Delaware Valley Financing Authority will go out to market on this thing. So I think in the ordinance, they provide enough leverage to, you know, be able to structure the loan, you know. Remember, the county's not going to incur any expense here. So the municipality, in this case, it'll be Lower Southford, that's the only municipality that's participating. So their loan will be $200,000, likely a ten-year loan, and the interest rate will be established, you know, by the authority with an agreement between the municipality and the authority, and the principal and interest will be paid back directly to the authority.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. The county does guarantee the note between the municipality and the authority. So that's our obligation.
Okay. All right. Hearing no further comments, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thanks. All right, Mr. Zellers, approval of a request for exoneration of back taxes for 215 South Washington Street in Pottstown. Good morning.
Morning. Excuse me. In August 2018, the board was approached to exonerate taxes at that time for the property in question. That exoneration was unanimously approved by the board with the goal of clearing title for the property so that it could move forward with further remediation. However, beyond the control of our partners in Pottstown, and Peggy Lee Clark is here representing Pottstown today, and she's going to speak in a moment, and the property owner, that the project was not able to move forward at that time, there were delays with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, as well as funding changes from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. So today, the board is being requested to exonerate taxes up to the date of purchase of the new owner, which is May 2020. The Borough of Pottstown and the Pottstown School District have provided similar exoneration. Additionally, the Pottstown Authority, which is the sewer and wastewater authority for the borough, has provided relief of back fees and interest due to them also. This approval will allow the property owner to pursue additional financing, as well as additional funding to continue the remediation of the site. Like I said, Peggy's going to talk in a moment and give you background on the site itself and why remediation is so important, as well as the significant private investment that's already been made to improve the site. I recommend approval of this relief for the following reasons. As I mentioned, the delays were beyond the control of the property owner, significant private investments already been made, and ultimately, there's a significant dearth of public funding available to support remediation and redevelopment right now in the Commonwealth. While we're not at a point yet where our industrial supply of properties is significantly constrained, we certainly want to do what we can as a county government to ensure we have a stable supply for the future. Put it another way, if I could be the Johnny Appleseed of industrial spec buildings throughout the county, I would do that. But we are where we are today. So with that, let me turn it over to Peggy to tell you about this project.
Good morning.
Good morning. If you figure out the formula, let me know.
That's why I'm here.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. It's very nice to see you, and thank you for the opportunity today. You know, I enjoy talking about Pottstown whenever I get to. It's a great day for me. So we are revisiting 215 South Washington. I just drove by this morning on my way there, and roof trusses are going up as we speak. So it's a very exciting project for us and one in great length. So Kelly, are you going to help me? Thank you. So these are some of the pretty pictures of what it looked like, and it's in the process of being transformed from. Next slide, please. This water, it was not a swimming pool. I don't know what was in it, but it now has been all cleaned up, so that's a good thing. Next slide, please. All right, so the background, this is not new information for you, but because it's been almost four years now since we were here last time for this project, I wanted to remind you about its physical location. It's a 3.89 acre parcel at South Washington in Industrial Highway, which is a very visible spot in Pottstown. It's a vacant two-story, 46,500 square foot building in a total state of disrepair. It was an industry of metal and electric plating, which was many of the industries within Pottstown, which was a highly polluting industry. The property was abandoned and blighted for ten-plus years at this point, and the former owner was delinquent on taxes, fees, and a variety of private past obligations. The lien holders really had no recovery of loss whatsoever, and the individual just sort of held it, and the numbers just kept racking up. The current owner has been working with the Borough, the RDA paid, and the former owner since 2015, and the Montgomery County Commissioners unanimously approved forgiveness of delinquent taxes in August 18. The property, as Mr. Zellers referred to, was, finally, they went to settlement in 2020. We did that at that time because we thought that there was going to be DE approval coming in a matter of days by just a simple memo. That was not true. They required more, and at the end of the day, it was February 2021, until there was absolutely approval for a cleanup plan. Next slide, please. So since that time, another lovely picture. Next slide. This is just the environmental part of the story. I use this slide just to show you how much testing has actually been done on this property, and I have copious amounts of paper in my office that have all of these reports in them. They have had several, the property has been tested several times with a cleanup plan, as I said, that has been, that has been approved by DEP. Next slide, please. So the investment that has been made, the RDA was able to, through their EPA grant money, giving us some relief in the form of a shared grant for the testing for Phase One and Phase Two. And then at the bottom of the slide, you see the expenses that have been paid by the developer to date. These are improvements, including, as I said, the roof trusses and a replacement of a roof, but this is not even at the point of the last of the environmental work as well as fit out for the property. Next slide, please. This was a big day. I felt like, I don't know, you know... I felt like, I don't know, you know, popping champagne on April 30th, 2022, because that was the first tax payment that was received by any entity in more than 10 years on the property. So you can see that the following tax revenue has been received. The current owner has been making the property current from his time of possession in 2020 to making everybody whole until that point, and then, so this has added up. We are well over $1 million at this point. Next slide. Clearing the record. So we are here today. You can see that the encumbrances that have been forgiven thus far from Pottstown Borough, as well as the Water and Sewer Authority and the School District at their June 30th meeting. Next slide, please. These are site renderings. This is what the future looks like. So I look forward to the day that you all can come and visit the site, and it looks very similar to this. Next slide. Next slide. So in closing, the property does have an approved DEP environmental remediation plan. Just yesterday, we went through it. I went through it with the owner. Although ISRP funding is not likely at this point because the RDA would have to take title due to regulation, that's not likely to happen at this point. The owner will be responsible for the last remediation piece. We are in the capital line budget for RACP money, so we will be making that application. That's a one-to-one match for $1 million. Pottstown has greatly improved upon property with the fit out not yet started. The total improvement investment outpaces the encumbrances at this point, and they're nothing but numbers on a piece of paper. They really, there was no way that anything was going to be recovered from that. And without the current owner, this very visible building would have continued to decay, and the site would remain environmentally contaminated. And that is my presentation, and thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. Let me get a motion on the floor here, and then I have a couple of questions. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to waive and abate the collection of county real estate taxes owed through the current year for the property located at 215 South Washington Street in Pottstown, including any interest and penalties due thereunder in the total amount of $48,686.91. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. So just a question on the timing. So we're being asked to exonerate taxes through 2022 or through?
That number, you want to?
Yeah.
The request was that we would exonerate through the current year. We were following the lead of the municipality and the school district, which had chosen to go through 2020.
Okay. So it is through 2020. Mr. Jones will be paying from 2020 on. To the county. Okay. So is this worded?
The wording is correct, yes.
It is. Okay. All right.
He would owe $4,212.66 for 2021, and then moving forward.
Got it. Okay. And that money isn't asked for? It is. Okay. Okay, great. So we can definitely expect that. All right. Okay. All right, then, hearing no other questions or comments, we will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
I'll look forward to seeing it. Thank you. All right. Elizabeth Rahm is up next. Authorization to submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a Community Traffic Safety Projects Grant. Good morning.
Morning. Good morning, Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, fellow colleagues, and county residents. My name is Elizabeth Rahm, and I am the Community Traffic Safety Program Manager for the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about a Community Traffic Safety Grant that we are applying for through the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, or PENDOT. This grant will begin on October 1st, 2022, and lasts until September 30th, 2023, so it is a one-year grant. And it is also a continuation of the current Community Traffic Safety Grant we hold with PENDOT, which seeks to reduce the incidence of traffic-related injury and death in Montgomery County for all residents. Next slide, please. In my presentation today, I'm going to share some of the key traffic safety focus areas within our grant, and some of the programs that we administer and community events that we attend to help accomplish our grant's goals and objectives. I'm also going to be talking about some of the opportunities that we are able to participate in through holding a grant with PENDOT, and also leave room for any questions and provide my contact information. Next slide, please. One of our key focus areas within the grant is child passenger safety. Our team is comprised of six child passenger safety technicians, or CPSTs. We offer both virtual and in-person car seat checks and events, which is made possible through our partnership with the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, or CHOP, and our Safe Kids Southeastern PA Coalition. More information about our car seat checks can be found here on our website at moncopa.org/carseatcheck. We also offer both virtual and in-person presentations on child passenger safety basics, newsletter inserts, and social media posts. And we are able to accomplish all of these through several of our community partners, including the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, or the MCIU, Connaughtale Honda, the Barnyard in Collegeville, Aklamo, Horseshoe Township Library, and the Montgomery County Foster Parent Association. Next slide, please. Another one of our key focus areas within the grant is teen driver safety. We currently administer the Impact Teen Drivers Program, which seeks to stop the number-one killer of teens in America today, which is reckless and distracted driving. Our two high school partners are Abington Senior High School and Happer-Horsham High School, where we offer the Impact Teen Drivers Program through presentations and virtual modules that are available for all teens and their parents in Montgomery County. Those free modules can be found on our website here at moncopa.org/teendriver. Also, at the high schools, we conduct pre- and post-CEFL observations. And we also partner with Abington High School's Red Cross Club for their Arrive Alive Program, which seeks to find safe ways for students to get where they want to go without being under the influence of drug or alcohol and distracted driving. Next slide, please. We also offer bike, pedestrian, and school bus safety within our grant, and we use the Safe Routes to School Program with our partner Rosalyn Elementary School. The Safe Routes to School Program encourages providing safe routes to school for all students, those that bike, walk, roll, or use other wheeled instruments to travel. We conduct a walk audit with the Montgomery County Planning Commission to identify any unsafe infrastructure around the school or on the routes that students take, including overgrown landscaping, cracked sidewalks, or maybe there might be a lack of a crosswalk or signage that could inhibit students' ability to get there safely. We participate in International Walk and Roll the School Day, which is held in October each year. You can see that pictured here on the bottom left. We had over 100 students from Rosalyn participate this year, and we look forward to doing that again this fall. We also offer lessons on bike, pedestrian, and school bus safety to elementary schools, summer camps, and community groups, including faith-based organizations, Boy Scout groups, and the like, all throughout the county. We also are able to host bike rodeos, where we can partner with local law enforcement and bike shops to help students learn how to ride a bike, how to navigate on the road or in their neighborhood, and also how to properly fit their helmet, and just talk about general bike safety. And then finally, each May is National Bike Month, so we promote our Monco Bikes 31 Initiative, which encourages Montgomery County residents to ride as many times as they can throughout the month of May. Next slide, please. Mature driver safety is another one of our key focus areas within the grant. We offer both virtual and in-person presentations, and can do tabling at senior centers, health fairs, and other various community events tailored to the elderly population. We promote PENDOT's Yellow Dot and Emergency Contact Programs. And another one of our programs that we're getting back into following the pandemic is our Car Fit Program, which helps to fit mature drivers in their vehicles that they are able to see and sit comfortably and ensure a safe ride. Next slide, please. As part of our pedestrian safety focus area, we also focus on parking lot safety. We've been working with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit and various childcare centers to provide these "park your hand here" card magnets and tip sheets in a variety of languages. These magnets can be placed towards the back rear reveal of a car, and it encourages children to place their hand on the magnet while their parent or caregiver is loading groceries, putting kids in their car seats, et cetera, and deters them from running around in the parking lot. Next slide, please. We also attend a variety of community events to connect with the community on traffic safety, including National Night Out with local law enforcement. We have an excellent partnership with the Elmwood Park Sioux. We've been able to attend their Party for the Planet, Safety Day, and Kids Fair events. We also host a Monco Trail Challenge Kickoff and Trigger Trails events every year, which promote our Monco Trail Challenge, and also provide activities for families to come and learn about safe and healthy physical activity, nutrition, and traffic safety. And then we also attend a variety of health and wellness fairs throughout the county to host tables and let families know about our programs and our partnerships. Next slide, please. Since our grant is through PENDOT, we have a variety of opportunities that we can participate in, specifically with Region 1, which is composed of Montgomery, Delaware, Bucks, and Chester Counties. We host an annual teen safe driving rodeo, which is pictured here, where all teens in all of our four counties are invited to come to learn about safe driving practices and rotate through a variety of stations. We also are able to host an annual law enforcement seminar for law enforcement to come and receive continuing education units. And we also are able to attend a variety of conferences, including PENDOT's Fall Communications Workshop and Spring Traffic Safety Conference, Safe Kids PrevCon, or Prevention Conference, and the Lifesavers Conference, which is the largest traffic safety conference in the United States. As part of our grant, we are required to write quarterly reports that include information on how we've been able to achieve our objectives and manage our budget. And then I've also had the opportunity to write this next grant that we are applying for. Next slide, please. Thank you again for allowing me to speak today and for your consideration in allowing us to apply for a continuation of our grant for the next year. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them now, or you can always reach me at my email here.
Thank you. Let me just get a motion on the floor, and then we'll see if anyone has comments. I will move that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby authorize the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a Community Traffic Safety Projects Grant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Well, thank you so much for that really comprehensive update on all the fantastic work that you're doing. And just one question, what is the size of this grant or potential size for this grant?
Like, funding-wise? Yeah, so it's approximately $73,000 that we'll be fully applying for.
All right. Sounds great. Any other questions?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Then with that, if there's no further comment, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Brian Olzak. Approval of the acceptance of the Cross County Trail East feasibility study. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we're asking you to accept the Cross County Trail East feasibility study, which we recently completed with the help of NV5, a consulting engineering and planning firm out of Philadelphia. Next slide. This project was funded by a grant that we applied when received from DVRPC's Transportation and Community Development Initiative, or TCDI, which was for $90,000, and that was funding the consultant with the study. And the primary purpose of the study was to find the most feasible single preferred alignment for a five-mile segment of the Cross County Trail, which is primarily located in Upper Dublin, Upper Morland, and Burnathen Borough, to enable us to design and proceed with the engineering phase of this project. Next slide. And here's the section that we are looking at here. The whole Cross County Trail runs from Conshohocken in the west, which connects with our Scugaw River Trail, and goes clear across the county, as you can see, all the way to our Penny Pack Trail in the east. And this segment that we're looking at is an approximately five-mile segment. Excellent. But more specifically, the goals of the study were to close a gap in the Montgomery County network of trails, as well as the circuit trails, which is our regional network of multi-use trails, of which the Cross County Trail is a part. Find a feasible trail route that fits into the existing built environment. This part of the county, as you well know, is, has much of its environment already built out, which makes it a little difficult from a trail planning perspective. We also will have created a route that maximizes neighborhood business and commuting connectivity in an equitable manner. And lastly, to find a route that is inviting, safe, accessible, and intuitive for users of all ages and abilities. Excellent. We performed several kinds of public outreach for this study. We had three rounds of virtual public meetings, where we invited the public to give feedback and to discuss potential alternatives. Two rounds of interactive mapping exercises, where individuals could place their preferences and potential barriers to trail usage on a map, of which we have one of those on the screen as an example. Four stakeholder committee meetings, where we had representatives from municipal officials, stakeholders, nonprofits, and property owners. We also had a project website, as well as a drone flyover video of our proposed trail alignment. And lastly, we also performed in-person events, where we popped up at several Celebrate Trails Day opportunities along our trails on Earth Day, actually. Next slide. We coordinated with many different agencies and utilities as a part of this initiative, including PENDOT, as well as the Turnpike Commission, and several other utility companies, railroad companies, and potential property owners who would be affected by this project. Excellent. And so here we are. Here is the, our main preferred alignment, which is in yellow there. It goes, it starts on Welsh Road on the Upper Dublin, Upper Morland boundary, and wins its way through the Horseshoe and Upper Morland Office Park complexes, through major corridors such as 611 and 263, the Turnpike moving east, as well as going under a Norfolk Southern rail bridge, which actually makes another significant trail happen, which I'll explain briefly. And at last, it arrives at our Penny Pack Trail at the far right of your screen. Those trails that are in red that you can see are actually trails that won't be developed by us, but that will be developed by our municipal partners, Upper Morland and Hattborough Borough, which are made possible by our trail project here. The one on the left is the Power Line Trail, which is one of the last remaining gaps of the Power Line Trail as it goes through Horseshoe. And then the one on the right is a connecting piece that will actually connect Hattborough Borough and Upper Morland High School to the south there, which is only made possible by our work with Norfolk Southern and their rail bridge. Next slide. And so we've arrived at our next step. So again, we're asking for the acceptance of the study by the board today, which will aid with our grant closeout. And our engineering phases could start, for this trail, could start as early as late 2022. And each segment will take approximately 12 to 18 months to design and engineer. And like, we will start likely with the easternmost piece of that segment here. And actually, we're just starting a feasibility study for the Cross County Trail West, which is in Plymouth Townships and White Marsh Townships, which will be the last piece that is not currently under study or design. And next slide. And that is my presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby formally accept the Cross County Trail East feasibility study as official county policy to guide Montgomery County's future recreation and conservation decisions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. I just want to point out for folks that this vote is a requirement of the grant. We don't typically do these kinds of things, but this was a specific requirement of the grant. But it was great to hear this update, and really appreciate the community engagement that you went through to come up with this suggested route, and look forward to seeing it start to get underway. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Great. Then we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thanks. All right. Next up, Donna Fabry, with an authorization to acquire an open space parcel in Upper Frederick Township. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm, today I'm seeking your authorization to acquire a 1.1-acre property that's owned by the Red Hill Christian School, operating as the Deep Creek by the Red Hill Christian School, operating as the Deep Creek Learning Center in Upper Frederick Township. This property is comprised of two parcels and is located at 2109 Deep Creek Road and 2115 Perkyomen Avenue in Perkyomenville. What you see here on this screen is the farmhouse building with its additions that has been functioning as the school's facility. The school has been growing and they're expanding, and so they have, they reached out to us to see if we would be interested in this property. Next slide, please. This, the location is located at the school's, where the red star is, at the base of Green Lane Park. Next slide. And as you can see, this is a really favorable acquisition for us. It's surrounded by other county-owned property, which is shaded in green on the map, as well as our network of trails within the park and the Perkyomen Trail that goes south of the park and connects all the way down into Collegeville. So the property was flooded last September and as part of Hurricane Ida, and so we had the property appraised at pre-flood and post-flood valuations, which came back at $325,000 for pre-flood and $218,000 post-flood. The school itself had an independent appraisal conducted, which came back with a value of $475,000, so kind of a big discrepancy there. But that, the reason for that was the increase in the, due to the market conditions, as well as different valuations in how the flood stigma was appraised. So we reached out to the property owner with a value of $290,000, and because they're looking to close this chapter and move on to their new facility, they accepted our offer. And so right now, a title search is underway, and with your authorization, we will aim to have this go to settlement next month. And then after that, we'll be demolishing the structures that are located on the property now, and then working with our park staff to convert this into a trailhead for those trail users heading south on the Perkyomen Trail.
Great. Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement of sale to purchase the Deep Creek Learning Center for the amount of $290,000, and that Montgomery County covers the required transaction fees, provided the property is found to have clear title. Be it further resolved that the interest to be acquired in the fore-said land shall be fee simple. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Sounds like a great opportunity.
Thank you very much.
All right, then we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Silver, you've been patiently waiting. Approval of the Housing and Community Development 2022 Annual Action Plan and Amendments to the 2015, 16, 18, and 19 Annual Action Plans. Good morning.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Again, Kaylee Silver. I oversee the Montgomery County Office of Housing and Community Development. In accordance with federal regulations, my office has prepared the 2022 Annual Action Plan for Community Planning and Development. This document is a requirement for direct assistance under certain U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, funding programs my office receives. And those grants out of HUD that my office receives include the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, or HOME, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, or ESG. Additionally, we include in this plan funding for projects to be allocated through the local Affordable Housing Trust Fund, or AHTF, the Housing Reinvestment Partnerships, sometimes known as HRI or HRP, and reallocated dollars out of an additional round of CDBG funding we received to help us respond to the coronavirus pandemic. So you'll see that later as CDBG CV. And you will see the funding amounts we received in those grants. If we can go to the next slide, please, Kelly. So the total amounts that we received from HUD are here on the screen. Some are amendments to prior-year resources for projects that were finalized, and we still had some money left over. Our home program also has some program income and prior-year resources that we have reallocated. And then the $285,000 is our usual entitlement from HUD for our ESG funds, and then we're reallocating $1.6 million out of CDBG CV funds. The, so this plan, the 2022 Annual Action Plan, that obviously we have to do every year, describes the way we propose to utilize the funding seen here. And this plan and the funding recommendations in the plan were that were made available for public comment from June 6th through the close of business on July 6th. The plan was available in print and online, and citizens were able to submit their comments about our proposed funding allocations via mail, telephone, or via email. And we also held a virtual public hearing on Thursday, June 23rd at 6:00 PM, where multiple members of the public attended via Zoom. All comments were received and reviewed. No comments were advocating for any change in the plan or funding decisions, and were supportive in nature. So next slide, please. The purpose of the Annual Action Plan is to establish reasonable basis for housing and community development assistance. At this date, Montgomery County expects to allocate funds now as following. So we'll first start with our CDBG projects. This will be on three separate slides totaling $3,752,163. And these CDBG funds will fund housing rehab, public facilities and infrastructure, public services, and homeless emergency housing projects. So on the first slide here, you see more of our borough awards that help fund street improvements, sidewalk improvements, and sewer improvements, as well as blight removal. Next slide, please, Kelly. You see here too, two more municipality grants for sidewalk improvements and sewer improvements. And then 15% of our CDBG grant is a maximum amount we can spend on public services. We do prioritize public services that help people experiencing homelessness, including veterans, youth, and people fleeing domestic violence. So you'll see our awards for various emergency shelter facilities. Next slide, please. And then finally, to finalize our public services here, we have the renovation of a building for public services, support for the North Hills Education and Recreation Program, serving youth, public infrastructure for our Montgomery County Housing Authority Public Housing Project, homeowner repair, fair housing compliance and education, a required HUD loan repayment, and then our administration. Next slide, please. Moving on from CDBG funding to home projects for funding, it totals, this is just one slide, $3,352,652.40 in home funds for affordable housing needs. This includes the construction of new affordable rental housing and homeownership, as well as tenant-based rental assistance, or TBRA, for people with disabilities and people living with HIV and AIDS. Next slide, please. $1.25 million in Housing Reinvestment Partnerships funds, which also supports the construction of new affordable rental housing for people with disabilities. Next slide, please. Our grant of $285,525 in ESG funds for homeless street outreach and rapid rehousing. This grant is specific for people experiencing homelessness. Next slide, please. $700,000 from the Montgomery County Affordable Housing Trust Fund for our First-Time Homebuyer Program for the, through the Montgomery County Housing Authority, more support for affordable homeownership housing, funding to support the Continuum of Care Rapid Rehousing and Permanent Supportive Housing Programs, which support people experiencing homelessness, and the Yearway Home Program. Next slide, please. $1,693,055.25 to reallocate CDBG CV dollars to support increased street outreach for people experiencing street homelessness, increased legal support for those facing eviction, support for the move of the single adult emergency housing facility to a new location, and support for the increased need of diapers at a local food bank. Next slide, please. So all in all, this totals over $11 million in assistance to our community, funds that specifically benefit persons of very low, low, and moderate income in our county. So your resolution today just finalizes that public comment period and these funding decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve the 2022 Annual Action Plan and Amendments to the 2015, 2016, 2018, and 2019 Annual Action Plans, and formally recommend the plan to the participating municipalities and nonprofit groups within Montgomery County, and to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as listed in the exhibit attached hereto. Be it further resolved that the proper county officials are hereby authorized to submit the 2022 Annual Action Plan and Amendments to the 2015, 16, 18, and 19 Action Plans to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for their review and acceptance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Pardue. Good morning.
Good morning. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, July 20th, 2022, with a timestamp of 11:00 AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve the July 21st, 2022 Personnel Presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right, Ms. O'Malley. We'll start with advertisements and bids and RFPs.
Yes, first, we have a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for pedestrian trail crossing safety upgrades. The successful bidder will provide upgrades and enhancements for pedestrian trail on Perkyomen Trail at Deep Creek Road in Parks Region 2. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for barn rehabilitation services. The successful responder will provide rehabilitation services for the barn at Pennypacker Mills. Contract be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for mill restoration services. The successful responder will provide a full-stage restoration of the historic mill at Sunrise Mill. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Four, an RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for design services. The successful responder will provide design and permitting services for the renovation of the existing restroom facility at Upper Schuylkill Valley Park. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Five, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for graphic design services. The successful responder will provide graphic design services to assist the Office of Drug and Alcohol with enhancing their awareness and education services in schools and the community. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder.
All right, I will move to approve the preceding requests for the advertisement of bids and RFPs, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have an advertisement of an RFP for the Southeastern Pennsylvania Task Force.
Yes, we have an RFP for building repairs. The successful responder will provide maintenance and repair services on the Building Fire Training Simulator at the Montgomery County Public Safety Training Campus. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.moncopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding requests for the advertisement of an RFP for the Southeastern Pennsylvania Task Force, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, next, we have awards and contract for the county.
Yes, one, contract award, information and technology solutions equipment, Pomeroy Technologies LLC of Hebron, Kentucky, $42,025.70. Contract provides network communications required to move two existing data centers to a new co-location facility. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award, assets and infrastructure construction, Richard E. Pearson Construction Company Incorporated of Piles Grove, New Jersey, $2,606,776. Contract provides the replacement of county bridge number six, Mill Creek Road at Mill Creek in Lower Marion Township. Specification 6481 was viewed by 42 providers with five responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, contract award, Health and Human Services consultants, Message Agency of Philadelphia, PA, $75,000. Contract provides for consultants who launch an advocacy and public education campaign around homes for all. RFP 2233 was viewed by 52 providers with five responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Four, contract award, Youth Center System Upgrade, Integrated Security Systems of Sauterton, PA, $26,750. Contract provides for the upgrade to the Alertis Emergency Notification System from the Class Emergency Notification System. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Five, contract amendment, assets and infrastructure fencing, ProMax Fence Systems LLC of Reading, PA, $3,984. Original contract provides for fencing protective barriers required along the Schuylkill River Trail in Norristown. Amendment provides for additional wooden post and rail fence required to complete the safety fencing. Six, contract amendment, information and technology solutions system upgrade, Integrated Security Systems of Harleysville, PA, $19,070. Original contract provides for county-wide security guard reader system upgrade. Amendment provides for installation of access control to the Department of Public Safety Warehouse in Fort Washington. Seven, contract amendment, Planning Commission, McMahon Associates Incorporated of Fort Washington, PA, $22,795.80. Original contract provides for a study of future transportation needs along portions of six major county-owned roads, including part of Eastern Road, Butler Pike, Germantown Pike, Summietown Pike, Swamp Pike, and Jerryville Pike. SOI 1930 was advertised on the PennDOT Engineering and Construction Management System. Amendment provides for an adjustment of the current contract amount up to the full contract amount approved by PennDOT. And there is one contract, 30 contract renewals, and three amendments for Health and Human Services. Those providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room.
Thank you. I'll move to approve the preceding awards and contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments?
Yes, I request that the motion is amended to separate contract award number three from the other contract awards. Number three is a contract for consulting to launch advocacy and public education campaign around homes for all, changing hearts and minds from "not in my backyard" mentality to "yes in my backyard." I believe these type of efforts are best done on the local level by locals owning hearing boards and municipalities, planning agencies, and local elected officials. And due to the fact that residents, property owners in Montgomery County are facing higher taxes this year, we have to be responsible with their tax dollars, and I don't believe this is considered necessary spending. So I'd like to separate that out.
All right, I will accept that. So we will be voting on all contract awards except for item number three. Any additional board comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. I will now move to approve the preceding award of contract number three, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any additional comment? No? We'll move to a vote then. Are there any negative votes?
Negative votes.
Okay, any positive votes? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I thought it was three.
It's three. Three. On the hands. Then let's make sure, then we should make sure that the minutes reflect that that was, that last one was for the consultant, the InCom LLC.
It's number, yeah, it's number three on our copies, so. All right, go to that. Okay, all right. Okay, any closing commissioner comments? Hearing none. I will announce that our next meeting is August the 18th, 2022. Note that we have only one meeting in August, and again, that will be on August the 18th. And I will move to adjourn the July 30th, I'm sorry, July 21st, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. And welcome the Controller to the dais. Good morning. And Ms. Co-Franisco, do we have any public comment on salary bill?
We do, yes. Do we need to read the rolls again, or?
No, the same rules.
Same rules.
Okay. DA Steele?
Good morning. So I, I want to just take a couple.
Two minutes.
Couple minutes to, to say thank you, I hope, for approval of some of the folks on the, on the list here today. And just to give you a little feedback, we have three assistant DAs that we And just to give you a little feedback, we have three assistant DAs that we've been able to recruit that I am really looking forward to working with. We have an experienced litigator who was a Middlesex Assistant District Attorney. We have a Allegheny County prosecutor who is a Army veteran and has worked with the JAG group there. And we have a forensic anthropologist professor who went to law school and will be joining us with your approval. And I, I say feedback in that what you've done has helped us recruit in a time where we're facing a national crisis in recruitment and retention of public service lawyers. The other thing I would like to comment on is the upgrades in positions for some of our investigators. I've been working on this, I think, for six years. And I want to say that I appreciate Lee and Barbara coming, spending time with those investigators, seeing what they do, seeing the changes that their jobs have involved, evolved into with technology and what has become such an important job into making sure that we are doing all of our obligations. This helps. I didn't even tell them about it because I, I want to hope that this goes through and it will be meaningful for them. Thank you.
Thank you, District Attorney Steele.
Wow. That was well done.
Very well done.
Trained lawyer. I guess that's what we get. All right. Welcome back, Ms. Perdue.
Thank you. Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a five-page document dated Wednesday, July 20th, 2022, with a timestamp of 11:00 AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the July 21st, 2022 Salary Board Presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same? Move by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. District Attorney, you can spread the good word. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the July 21st, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Move by Controller Sanchez? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.